Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning for our city council work session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the role?
Chetum.
Here.
Lyric.
Here.
Bangum.
Here.
Mansfield.
Nichols.
Paulson.
Here.
Blah.
Here. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number two is Flock Safety Technology Solutions Presentation. Representatives from Flock Safety and Pocatello Police Department will be in attendance to present information regarding Flock Safety License Plate Recognition, LPR Technology Products and Services. Good morning.
Good morning. Chief Roger Shy of Pocatello Police Department. Before we go on, I'd like everybody at the table to introduce themselves so the council is familiar with everybody.
Zach Barci with the Pocatello Police Department, Lieutenant.
I'm Caroline Frayer, Territory Sales Manager with Flock Safety.
Good morning. Kristin McLeod, Community Affairs Manager with Flock Safety.
So we'd like to thank the members of Flock that came to Pocatello. Caroline flew in yesterday from Los Angeles and then from Boise. So thank you for traveling here to help us present this. So what LPRs are, license plate readers. And the why behind this is that with technology growing and with Pocatello being the gate city, we've been investigating license plate readers for quite a while. In fact, we've TNEed some. We've had some success with license plate readers. And a lot of different cities already have them up and running in our state. Napa has a real-time crime center. A lot of other people use Flock. The reason we chose Flock is because of their network. Their network expands nationwide. They're the largest license plate reader company in the country. And what this will do is give us the capability of tapping into that network so that if we have somebody who's trafficking drugs or humans or wanted and we have their license plate, we'll be able to track them if they're coming to Pocatello. And we would know when they're en route from the earliest position of where Flock is located with their cameras. So this will help us with intelligence. This will help us with tracking wanted people or people that are trafficking drugs. You know, a perfect example was just recently here in the city of Pocatello, we had a vehicle that was stolen with a baby in it. And it was from the Walgreens. And that would have been a perfect example to use these license plate readers to help to help find that vehicle. Luckily, we were able to find it and that the vehicle was abandoned and the child was unharmed. But if that was not the case, then we would have been able to put that license plate in and track it as it went through town. And another instance where license plate readers would have been very effective is the tragic incident that happened up at the University of Idaho just a couple of years ago. And if they had that technology up there and they had that person's license plate, they could have plugged that license plate in and it would attract Mr. Corburger's vehicle all the way around town. So that's the why behind this. It's to help keep our community safe. It's to help our officers be more effective and more efficient. It's a force multiplier. And with that, I will turn it over to Lieutenant Barci and the folks from Flock to present.
So I just wanted to, I appreciate Chief Shy bringing me in. He asked for us to do research in reference to license plate readers and basically meet with several different companies, sales managers. And we've done that. We've done our, what we feel is our due diligence. And we feel that Flock has risen to the top of that. And so they do an excellent job. Every single part of the vetting process is every single agency department that I've reached out to has been very happy with Flock. I've not heard one agency tell me anything other than high praise for the people that work for Flock, for their technology and for their ability to help keep their community safe and to solve crime. And so with that, we've brought the, our great Flock representatives and they're going to give a presentation to share exactly who they are and what they can do for us.
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. Good morning, Mayor, council members, community of Pocatello and city staff. Again, my name is Kristin McLeod and I'm happy to share information with you this morning. And after we conclude the presentation, we're also here to help answer any questions that you may have. Just to start off, a little bit of history on Flock as a company. We started in 2017 after our founder and CEO Garrett Langley experienced an uptick of crime in his own neighborhood. An engineer by trade, he started asking a lot of questions of law enforcement and kind of digging deeper into what is needed to help solve crime and protect the community even more. He learned that the majority of crime is actually committed in conjunction with use of a vehicle. So overwhelmingly, law enforcement said license plate recognition, vehicle recognition would be really critical to solving cases. So he set out, did research and created a tool that would help law enforcement multiply their force, be efficient and effective, and also affordable for communities nationwide. We've noticed that nationally, police have fewer resources, crime continues to occur, and oftentimes agencies struggle with hiring and retention. And so Flock really saw an opportunity to utilize technology for good. With the limited police resources and crime continuing, and also the really important piece of community trust in law enforcement, we see the opportunity to help protect first responders and the community by using technology, collecting and distributing objective evidence to the right users, which are your officers, and then also engaging the community to support and grow programs like this. We work with commercial businesses as well as private entities like HOAs. Oftentimes, those entities will purchase cameras, place them on their private property, but share that access with their local law enforcement. So law enforcement on their side of things will be alerted when a wanted vehicle passes by a camera in that a private entity would own and share with them. Very briefly, this is our Flock Safety Platform. We started with our flagship license plate recognition technology, which is what we're going to focus on today. We have other tools that help detect trouble, which are our Raven, which is audio detection, so gunshots, fireworks, Condor, which is live video, and then our Wing, which integrates third-party infrastructure into the Flock system. We have technology that decodes mountains of evidence and then our technology gets that information quickly to officers via alerts, maps and other tools. This is a picture of the camera. You'll see a little bit later in the presentation how it's mounted and its solar panel. So the cameras are mounted on about a 14-foot pole. They're solar powered and they are stationary. When a vehicle passes by a camera, they're motion activated. They take a still image that's focused on the rear of the vehicle. It then captures all of the vehicle attributes. It's focused on those details, not people, and gets that information, stores in a database for about 30 days, and I'll get into that in a little bit, so that the police have that information if a crime occurs to investigate it, but also to be alerted to wanted vehicles when they pass by a camera in your community. It operates 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. For our law enforcement customers, we're integrated with the National Crime Information Center. So when law enforcement agencies all over the nation enter in information on wanted vehicles and subjects and wanted vehicles associated with those subjects, they can be alerted to those vehicles and that information. We're also integrated with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, so Amber Alerts. So when a vehicle associated with an Amber Alert passes by a camera in the community, your officers will also be alerted to those. So this is license plate recognition, gathering objective evidence about vehicles, not people. There is no facial recognition within the LPR system, within our Flock system. We're not collecting any biometric or sensitive information. There are still images of their rear of vehicles, again, those vehicle details. Not used for tracking speed or parking violations, and we're not stockpiling data long-term. So to wrap it all up, we're proactive in that we're providing real-time alerts to officers. We're investigative, giving them that information going 30 days back. And then also, we've heard that Flock cameras can serve as a deterrent. So once the cameras go up in your community, oftentimes, word spreads fast among circles of folks who are intent on committing crime in your community, and it makes it a lot riskier to do so. Flock very much believes in being a trusted partner and we take privacy concerns seriously, and we've built safeguards into our system. The first one is that the footage is 100% owned by the city and the department and will never be sold or shared by Flock. I mentioned the 30-day data retention. So when a vehicle passes by the camera and an image is taken, that image is given a "time to live" stamp. And at the 30-day mark, that image is hard deleted and unrecoverable unless your officers have downloaded that to their evidence repository system just as part of a criminal investigation. It's focused on that objective data, so very much taking that human bias out of crime solving. All of the data is stored securely with end-to-end encryption of all data, even though no sensitive information is contained in the system. With regard to accountability mechanisms, in the Flock system, a search reason and user number is saved in the system indefinitely, which creates an audit trail so that Chief and his command can ensure that the system is being utilized in accordance with department policy. We're not used for parking enforcement or tolls. We're not connected to registration data or third-party databases such as Carfax or DMV. And then something unique to Flock, which is free and optional for cities, is what we call our transparency portal. It's a Flock-generated, public-facing webpage, and this is an example that Boulder, Colorado has. And this shares information on how the department is utilizing the system, their policies, what's detected, what's prohibited use of the system, what's acceptable use of the system, some metrics, including how many vehicles were detected by the cameras in the last 30 days, how many searches were conducted by the department in the last 30 days, et cetera. And many agencies also choose to link their ALPR department policy to the webpage as well. In addition, we have an Insights Dashboard. So while this is a public-facing webpage, the Insights Dashboard is an internal dashboard for a chief and command and admins of the system to see, are the cameras giving us the return on investment that we need? Is it a right fit for our community? Are officers actually utilizing the tool so that you all can make decisions into the future? That's where the audit search history lives. And also, Chief can look into the camera functionality and health. Although, we do handle all of that. Flock operates as a subscription service. We actually own the hardware, and that means we take care of all the maintenance, software updates, installation, permitting, you name it. When you're under contract, we provide all of those services to you. And just to share a little bit about some use cases and how we're already solving and preventing crime in the area, the Flock Safety Network, you can see on the map, we are growing in Idaho. We have a presence in Utah, your neighbors to the south. And this is a small listing. We also have some private entities that are represented on the map as well. And then to, just to share how some agencies have shared with us some of their use cases and successes, this is from Caldwell PD. They actually have our license plate readers as well as our audio detection. This is an example of how they use our license plate recognition technology in conjunction with the audio detection to respond to a gunshot. They were alerted to gunfire in a neighborhood. They were able to respond quickly, obtain objective evidence, and then arrested the suspects who were currently accused of multiple crimes, including discharging a firearm within city limits and carrying while under the influence. This is an example of a stolen vehicle that was Madison Police Department, South Dakota, were alerted to. It had a Minnesota plate. They performed a traffic stop on the vehicle. They were able to arrest the two people in it, and the charges included possession of stolen property, an open container, and also possession of drug paraphernalia. Oftentimes, and Chief and Lieutenant can probably speak more to this, with stolen vehicles, many times there are other crimes associated with that vehicle. So a really good case of use of that alert. In addition to solving crime, our LPRs have been really integral in locating missing vulnerable people and Amber Alerts. This is an example that O'Fallon, Missouri, shared with us. About 9:30 or 10:30 a.m., an elderly woman went to a doctor's appointment. Later that afternoon, she hadn't heard from her mom, so she reported her mom missing. Crime analysts entered in her vehicle description into the Flock system and created an alert. 15 minutes later, the woman's vehicle passed by a camera in the community, and officers were able to locate her and return her safely home. And then lastly, this is an example of an Amber Alert where agencies worked cross-jurisdictionally utilizing LPRs. Deputies with La Paz County, Arizona Sheriff's Office were notified that a vehicle associated with an Amber Alert had passed by a camera in their community. The alert had been issued from Casper, Wyoming, and involved a 14-year-old endangered juvenile. Deputy was able to locate the vehicle and get the 14-year-old female back home safely and arrested a 36-year-old subject. With that, I will pause and maybe pass it back to Lieutenant or Chief if you wanted to add anything. Otherwise, we're happy to answer any questions.
So just thank you for that. Appreciate that information. And to kind of piggyback on that, I was up in Spokane County at their Real-Time Crime Center, and they do use Flock up there. And as of September of this year, they had 140 success stories. They recovered 44 stolen vehicles, 98 suspects were charged, and they located eight missing people. So that's the power of technology and the direction that we would like this to head for the city of Pocatello and to help keep our community safe. And it aligns with our mission, vision, values, expectations, and our leadership principles.
Okay. Councilmember Chetum?
I got a bunch of questions. Does this system work better at city street speeds? Or is it equally efficient at highway, state speeds, those kinds of things?
That's a great question. We have two versions of our Falcon camera. So that is something that we evaluated when we were deciding where we should put the cameras. So we did evaluate speed as well as the distance and the number of lanes, too. So we have two types of cameras, a standard Falcon, which is designed for two lanes of traffic going in the same direction, speeds of about up to 75 miles per hour. And then we have a Falcon Long Range, which is three lanes and speeds greater than 75 miles per hour. So we ensured that we vetted that as we decided which product would be the most efficient.
Is, are the various camera systems in the Flock system itself, is there some interconnectivity so that one could track a license plate from one community to the next?
So each agency owns their data 100%, and with that, they're in control of who they share the information with. So Chief may get a request from Twin Falls to share information, and he can elect to share hot list alerts. He can elect to share, you know, being able to search, query their cameras for specific information. So all of that, and of course, there's great benefit to sharing with other law enforcement agencies, but that is under full control of the department. Each department chooses how much they want to share, and they can take that sharing privilege away at any time as well. And then just to highlight with the accountability piece, if Twin Falls were to access Pocatello's cameras, all of that is recorded in an audit trail as well.
The reason I ask, several weeks ago, I spent a shift with an Idaho State Police Trooper, riding with them. And one of the cars that was stopped that day, one of the other officers working that particular area had done some kind of a search, and I suspect it's something like this. Five days before that car had been in Minnesota, two days before it had been in California, and now was headed back east again, which to the officers who were working the case, it indicated a probable drug mule situation, although the dog was not able to find anything. But it tells me that was probably something like your license plate recognition system. I presume this is a wireless system?
Yes.
Upload to the cloud?
Solar-powered, yep. And the images are uploaded to Amazon Web Services Cloud and end-to-end encrypted.
So for 30 days for each camera, what kind of storage does that take?
So we handle, oh my goodness, this far, it's millions of images nationwide.
Yeah, a lot.
Yeah.
Interesting statistic is we process more images than Instagram.
Wow.
So.
Wow.
Let's put it into context. Millions and millions of images that are stored in our cloud.
And Councilman Chetum, to answer a couple of those questions, we've already spoken with Chief Kingsbury and Chief Ingram from Twin Falls and Caldwell, and we're planning on sharing information with them. And Lieutenant Barci has his binder opened up to the case where the escaped prisoners were out of Boise that made the big circle and loop and actually came through Pocatello and ended up back in Twin Falls. And their Flock license plate readers were able to pick up on that minivan and where it went. So, but if we had shared information, then we would be more interconnected to be able to say yes or no if that vehicle did pass through our community.
Does this work as well at night as it does in daytime? I mean, is the resolution sufficient to prevent any potential legal concerns about misidentification?
Yes, we're highly accurate at night. So we have night vision, which is enabled on all of the cameras by default. So it'll have the image and then there'll be a night vision, an enhancement of the photo, too. So you're still able to see, you know, the color of the vehicle, the make. But the way that our software works is it's a machine learning component that looks at the rear of the vehicle. So you can search for it or look for it the same way a human would. The machine learning can see and ascertain a lot more than maybe a human could. So the machine learning component, even at night, will look at the distance between taillights, the overall shape of the vehicle, and still be able to detect, you know, the make or any other unique identifiers as well. But to answer your question, night reads are never an issue.
What about those folks, and I've seen several the last few days, who put those clear covers over their license plate?
Yes.
To me, to look at those, I've seen two yesterday. I can't read it. Can Flock see through that?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. So the way that our cameras work, because they are motion-activated, the camera will be triggered as soon as a vehicle passes by. So with a lot of other LPR cameras, the way that they work is that when the camera detects off of the IR of the license plate, you know, that means that they wouldn't be able to capture the image. But because our cameras are motion-activated, if it's a clear cover, if it's a paper plate, if somebody puts something on to remove the reflective coating, we're still able to detect and capture those images, no problem.
I'm done.
Okay. Council President Lyric?
I have a few, but one just popped into my head, that last question. What about the temporary tags that people often put in the back window? Will it capture that as well?
Yes.
And can it read it? Sometimes those are hard to read, too.
Correct. So it will capture all of that as well as any other unique identifiers such as bumper stickers, roof racks, bike racks, window decals, toolboxes, trailer hitches.
Anything that helps identify a particular vehicle. Okay.
Yeah, there's an example of that in the binder of another incident from Twin Falls where homicide suspect was located. It was in the packet that Lieutenant Barci submitted, where they actually eliminated several similar vehicles, but properly identified the correct vehicle based off some of that information.
Because how many crimes have we seen across the country where it's a white van and there's a million white vans? So yeah, narrowing it down to the correct one can be...
And that's a great point, is that what it's doing is this information is being sent. There's now 10 white vans that we're looking for. The officer has to go through those to see which one might match. And then they would take that license plate and do things that we would normally run that license plate to gather, that vehicle registration and history and information.
So you're adding that to this?
So that license plate information is never saved on Flock database. It's only going through, okay, now the officer has a picture and the license plate information, and then they're able to take that and further their investigation.
And so they would do that part now or before, but now they have more information to start with?
Yes.
Okay. That's really good. The other question I have is kind of similar, well, it's related anyway. In terms of sharing information, so you mentioned that you're planning to share with Twin Falls, for example. I would imagine maybe some other agencies within Idaho, but I'm kind of curious, one of the things we've seen with like national crimes has been a lack of sharing of information or notification. Somebody has, you know, a law enforcement officer has a problem in one state, but then that vehicle is traveling across several states or across the country, and other states are not aware that they have a problem coming their way. And so I'm wondering how much out-of-state or is it interstate sharing would be done?
The great thing that Flock has set up on their system is that it's basically, we give permission, we ask, and then we can give permissions, right? So Twin Falls would say, hey, can we have your information? And we can choose what to share. And then we can do the same for other agencies and their respective. But I agree with you 100% that we fail the most in reference to communication, right? And so I do not see a reason that if any agency is going to ask, that we're not going to share around the, you know, specifically around Idaho and Utah. And then we would expect that same, everyone that I've talked to, we actually went to a site visit to Ogden Police Department. They use Flock cameras and they have a real-time crime center, and we had a whole bunch of questions. And they said the same thing, that they would share all their information with us and they would love it if we shared with them, right? Because that communication is what we really want. That's part of the package that Flock brings.
And I think that would be great. I would ask one step further. Is it, you said you'd be willing to share if they asked and vice versa. What if you don't know to ask? Can you notify another agency that this person might be headed your way?
Yeah, that's part of the...
Or this vehicle?
That's part of the startup process, is that, so everybody that has Flock knows, right? And then everyone gets alerts. And so Flock does a good job of making sure that being part of a good partner is making sure that we're all talking to each other.
Okay.
Right? So that's, and then part of our setup is that we want to go around and we want to ask. We want to find out who all has Flock cameras, and we're asking for permissions.
So having, being part of this network in itself then provides a whole nother layer of information that maybe you wouldn't have had otherwise. Like you'll receive alerts if something's happening?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's really good.
And I can elaborate on that a little bit. So one of the main cornerstones of Flock is the power of the Flock network. So Pocatello PD might not share one-on-one directly with, let's say, Bakersfield, California Police Department. They don't really have a reason to be searching Bakersfield's cameras directly. But what agencies can do, and it's very rare that agencies don't do this, is you can opt into the national network. And so what the national network provides is if you provide a license plate, you can see if that license plate was picked up at any other Flock camera across the entire nation. So in examples where there's, you know, multi-state drug trafficking, you would be, they would be able to see if a vehicle passed by Flock cameras in California, if they passed by in Nevada, really to create that trail across the entire nation. And it's very rare that agencies don't opt into the national network, which is separate from one-to-one sharing, which Pocatello and Twin Falls may do, where there's still a lot of value in that national network as well.
Right. So, and doing both or being part of both just is that much more coverage and information. So that's really good. My last question is really a curiosity, because I kind of remember when cities first started having cameras, you know, and the idea was, and sometimes, you know, we know that stores or buildings or cities, you know, even put up fake cameras, because the idea was that the camera itself was a deterrent. And you mentioned that that was one of the benefits, that cameras can be a deterrent. And I was just curious about, does the data show that they actually are? Because you see all the time criminals, you know, starring on videos where, how did they not think that there was a camera there, but yet somehow they don't? So I'm wondering how much the data shows whether cameras are deterrents or not. And like I said, this is more of a curiosity, but, and has that improved or changed over the years or?
Deterrence is a big box of worms, and it's really hard to determine and track because there are so many variables. But what we have seen in communities that have implemented LPR, agencies will share with us, you know, I'm, one community shared that they had a, or in, it was a Washington community, they had a 25% decrease in that year.
they had a, or in, it was a Washington community, they had a 25% decrease in that year after installing Flock cameras. So of course, there are many variables that go into that, but we do hear from departments and communities that after, you know, they have had Flock installed, that they have seen, you know, X decrease in residential burglaries or X decrease in stolen vehicles, et cetera. So and we're happy to share some of those statistics with you as well.
Okay. And certainly, there's a lot of benefits to doing this anyway. That would be an additional one, which would be good. I was just wondering, you know, the effectiveness of that. But I think there's enough benefits even aside from that one, but just curious. I think that's all mine.
Okay, Councilmember Paulson.
Okay, so I understand the good. No one wants their car stolen or grandma to go missing. I really do get all of that. But my concern is mass surveillance, whether it's corporation or government. Have there been any like misuse abuse, whether it's from police departments, whether it's a personal officer stalking someone, you know, situations like that?
There, situations of misuse have certainly occurred. And I think the important piece with the Flock system is that we do require a search reason. And the majority of departments will weave into their department policy that is a requirement at a certain cadence that audits are conducted. When agencies have implemented those audits, the misuse is detected very quickly. And so I think that piece is really, really critical with any, any type of system. Of course, there is the opportunity for misuse, but with the Flock system, again, with that accountability feature, that misuse is caught very quickly.
Can I add on to that? Before anything would be implemented, we would make sure that we would have a policy put in place for the use and making sure that there was checks and balances for misuse.
And we already, right now, we have cameras that are recording at every intersection in town. And we we use them pretty regularly on to identify suspects and and that has not been an issue. And if for some reason we thought that was an issue, it would be handled immediately.
Thank you.
Can I have a quick follow up to that?
Sure.
Just on that question, and you said you would develop a policy. Do we have a policy now? Or has that not been needed?
I've contacted Twin Falls and I actually have a policy here from Twin Falls in reference to what they currently use. And so, you know, we wanted to get direction from the mayor and city council before any of that is finalized. But we've already read through that and seen what we like. And we'll make sure that it'll mirror some of what they're currently using. And they use Lexipol, that's a system that we use for our policies.
And I think it's good. I mean, I'm glad in the usage we have so far that we haven't had issues. But I also think it's good to be proactive, especially when we're kind of upping the game in terms of technology that we don't, that we have a policy to avoid having
Yeah, absolutely.
future problems. So clarity is always good.
Yeah, we want to, we want to, we want the community to trust us, right? And then we want to make sure that we're not misusing anything and that this is a force multiplier, but it's for for good. And so having a policy set in place and checks and balances and making sure that we're truly doing this to make sure that we keep our community safer is the intent.
Councilmember Mangum?
Four, possibly five questions. I'm gonna try to keep it brief. I'm not known for that, but we're in, we're in trying. I appreciate Councilmember Paulson's question. Have you had any instances where invasion of privacy has been litigated against you or anybody has made any accusations in that, in that reference?
So there are, there is, one comes to mind, there was a court case out of Virginia that cited Fourth Amendment concerns. And again, we certainly appreciate the, the question and concern around that. We believe, and I will say that the cameras are capturing a point in time. It's not consistent monitoring of a vehicle throughout the community. So yeah, and I'm sure there will be court cases into the future. But the way that our system is set, and again, capturing that point in time of the license plate, and with it being a very directed use for criminal investigation or public safety purpose only, and with the safeguards in place, we believe that we are striking that balance of protecting privacy while also providing an efficient, impactful investigative tool for public safety.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add on to that real fast? So that Virginia case specifically that she's talking about, the Fourth Amendment, the problem that agencies are running into is they're trying to use license plate readers or cameras when they're going into a curtilage of someone's private property household, right? So maybe a vehicle is in the backyard or, right? And so there's a fence up and they're going beyond what would be private, right? And that's nowhere near what we're trying to do. We're saying if someone's coming onto a public street and they're driving, that we're capturing the back and specifically the backs, we're not capturing their face as they're driving, right? It's the back of the vehicle. So there's no expectation of privacy, therefore there's no violation of a Fourth Amendment right. Does that make sense?
And there's several Supreme Court cases that are out there that talk about the license plate on the vehicle not being protected. It's it's in public view, anything in public view. So there's, and there are several court cases that do quote that.
Thank you. So I'm seeing here, we have a proposed approximately 34 possible cameras in 34 different locations. Is this adequate for us being the gate city? I mean, we have a lot of stuff that passes through Pocatello, right? And passes by Pocatello. And so is this adequate? Is this, are these the most trafficked locations? What led us to these 34 proposed locations?
So I'll tell you that we've met with Flock representatives. I built a team with the police department of several officers and our current crime analysts, right? And we've talked about these, these locations. And we've also talked about the amount and where to start from. I can tell you that Twin Falls, they got some Flock cameras and then they recognized that they needed more, right? So they were actually just signed the dotted line for a second bout of Flock cameras about a month ago. But what we did is we met with specialists with Flock, a former law enforcement officer that actually works with them and Carolyn and some others. And we said, hey, here are some areas that we want to focus on. And these are, this is what we feel is going to be a good start in reference to seeing. Now, the nice thing about these, these target areas are nothing's necessarily set in stone because Flock does a really good job of saying, hey, for a small fee, you can change where these cameras are, right? And we can, we can move things around and we can say, you know what, this one is really not giving us any information. Let's, let's move it over here and move it around over there. But as far as, is it enough? I mean, I would love to give the city of Pocatello like a iron dome of technology and information, right? The city has hundreds of cameras, ISU has hundreds of camera, hundreds, thousands of cameras, right? But we feel that this is a great first start.
So I'm glad you mentioned ISU and someone else had mentioned other agencies. Is there any partnership with other agencies, say, like the FBI, Homeland Security, things of that nature, that we would be looking at, conjoined efforts?
So, so I, recently I met with the FBI and the FBI police. We talked about them providing some funding to assist. They are working on running that up their flagpole, but I plan on, once we get this plan moving forward, to recontact them and let them know where we're at with it. Because I told them it was in the planning stages right now. But we did talk to them about the services that we do provide out there. They were talking about bringing some more services out there. And I brought forward this plan and they were very interested in adding some that do surround that complex for added security purposes, with it being the Western hub for the United States.
Awesome. So, so for the two of you, does Flock currently interact with any other agencies like the FBI, Homeland, DEA, so on and so forth?
I don't believe we have any federal partnerships currently. However, I will, I want to be 100% and I can get back to you on that. And I, as far as, again, sharing each of our customers own their own data and would be in control of that sharing mechanism as well, just to highlight that piece again.
Last two questions.
Can I, can I add on to the partnership piece? So when we started looking at cameras, we brought in a partner, we brought in Director Pino from Idaho State University, right? And we brought in Bennett County Chubbick ISP. We've talked to the FBI, right? And this, we want to bring in partners, we want to communicate what we're doing and other partners are looking at adding on. So that's something that we want to make sure that, yes, partners are a big goal of ours.
And the county's already looking to at some of those high speed cameras for the interstate at some key locations. So I've been speaking with, with Sheriff Manu about that.
So are there, do you know of any, or can you talk about any similar systems that are like Flock that might be out there and how you might compare?
Like other competitors? A main one that comes to mind is the Vigilant system through Motorola. They're big, especially on the West Coast. The main differentiator between Flock and the other competitors are more legacy LPR providers out there is our end to end subscription model. So as Kristen said, we maintain and maintain ownership of the hardware. So that means we're fully responsible for installation, maintenance, et cetera, which means that the police department isn't going to have to troubleshoot cameras. They're not going up on the ladder and installing them. That's all part of Flock. That is very unique to Flock, that end to end service model. Also, what's very unique to Flock is that the fact that our cameras are motion activated. So I mentioned before, a lot of other legacy LPR cameras, what triggers the camera to take the image is the reflection off of a license plate, where we take a very different approach.
Most other cameras are hardwired in as well. And where these, these are, they have the solar power, but they also have a battery pack that's a backup, right? But it's nice that we would consider this a sole source in reference to Flock's product is very unique. And we don't want to, you know, I showed the representatives around, right, to dispatch and other things. And the nice thing about this is they have an app that we can use. We don't want to put a burden on the street department. We don't want to put more of a burden on our dispatch. We want this to go straight to the officers and Flock allows us to do that. So we're not burdening other people, but we're taking the information and we're taking it straight to the police officers.
So I can tell you that we have done extensive research at some of the conferences that Major Anderson and I attended. They have these big technology expos. And we have, I feel sorry for the, what was his name? Trevor?
Trevor.
Trevor, I asked him a lot of hard questions at an event. And we, we, we talked to a company called Recor, which is with sound thinking now. We talked to the Motorola folks. We talked to a company called Packet Talk. We talked to some companies that have since gone, some smaller companies that have gone, they've, they've gone bankrupt or they've gone out of business because they're the, the smaller companies that are not surviving. And the things that Flock does offer is a lot of, and they have a lot of good things coming in the future, a lot of good technology that they're researching. They have people behind the scenes that are using the latest, greatest technology to be on the cutting edge. And the nice thing is, is if a newer camera comes out, they'll come out and, and correct me if I'm wrong, they'll, they'll replace all of our cameras as part of the upgrade, as part of the subscription fee. So though those are all things that we, we took into consideration and the fact that we're, we're going to look at their, what's called Flock OS system that pipes in all of the cameras, we're, we're gonna, we, we did this research on getting ISU's cameras, School District 25's cameras and putting them into one platform. And that's that Flock OS that was talked about on one slide. So because they do offer that, that was a lot of reasons why we chose Flock. And the other, the other people just didn't offer the same things. And then, and the network was, was really the, the tipping point.
So you're encrypted end to end, right? So, and I appreciate that. But a lot of companies say they're encrypted and the software is so protected, but hacks are still happening. How do you deter from being hacked and your information being leaked and things of this nature?
So we have, and I will share the link with chief to share with you all, a trust report which goes in detail on our data security measures. But encrypted end to end, all of the images are stored on the Amazon Web Services cloud. The background integration with the NCIC and National Center for Misusing Exploited Children, that is all held on the Amazon Web Services Government Cloud. So top notch security. We're also more than happy to connect you all with our product team who can really go into the weeds and in depth on all of our security measures. But I will assure you, we take the greatest care with data security, even though no sensitive information is contained within the system.
Thank you.
And the nice thing about that, too, is that it just gives an image of a plate. It's then upon us to run that information through our NCIC computer, through our dispatch center. So it doesn't, it wouldn't, if something were to happen, it wouldn't say that this is who is driving and this is where they live and this is, it, it doesn't provide that, that we have to, we have to do that on our end through our secured systems.
So as the mayor's going 75 down Yellowstone, you'll never know it's him, you'll just get the plate.
Just his vehicle.
Just the plate, okay.
Yeah.
We also don't have any speed tracking, so we would have no idea.
So he's fine to keep speeding? Okay.
I don't know how fast that would go.
I mean, allegedly, you know?
And Councilmember Mangum, we don't know that he didn't like take the mayor's vehicle and run it.
He left the keys out?
Yeah.
Be confident, that's what happened.
Yeah.
Okay, so I do have a couple of questions, too. The council's asked a number of them. Real quick, we've talked a little bit about, well, number one, a policy. Sounds to me like we're going to plagiarize Twin Falls' policy. I think most important is we've got to get that in front of our legal department so we can get that moving forward. By the way, I think this is a great idea. I love it. I wish that we had 150 cameras throughout the city. I wish that we had them all the way up and down I-15 corridor. I don't know why we wouldn't be sharing information with Vegas and San Diego and anyone else up and down the I-15 corridor, because that's where our traffic's coming from most of the time. And so I, I think that we ought to be putting these cameras all the way, all over the place. So that, that being said, I recognize we, we can't, I, I understand there's some concerns with, with, and I, I guess I don't think like a criminal, I don't know why we would care if the information was leaked, that my license plate was at four different stoplights or something like that. Maybe somebody knows why that would be an issue. But policy, number one, we've got to get that going before we do anything else. There's absolutely no reason why we move forward without a policy, for sure. And so I'm glad that we've got one. I do have a little bit of concern because we talked a little bit, it was just mentioned, it was briefly mentioned, that private organizations, corporations have these cameras and, and stuff. They own that information. If we're asked to, to, for information from another department, do we have the ability to share their information or do we have to get permission from them to do that? So Rick has a plate, Linda has a plate reader, these two have a plate reader. And now I, I'm curious, you ask me, all right, can I get information from Rick's place? Well, do I have to call Rick and then Linda and, and all of these people to get permission? Because that to me seems very time consuming in order to get something back to you. So what is that, where's that information owned?
I can take this question. So we'll use the example of Lowe's. All Lowe's in America have Flock LPR cameras. So Lowe's and Pocatello PD would, Pocatello PD would access Lowe's cameras if Lowe's were to say yes, which I presume that they would. Lowe's would not be able to access Pocatello PD's cameras. Law enforcement cameras can only be shared with other law enforcement agencies. They cannot be shared with any businesses or HOAs. Businesses and HOAs can be shared to law enforcement, but not vice versa. So for example, if Twin Falls wanted to see if there was a license plate that passed by the Pocatello Lowe's camera, they would then have to get that access through Lowe's as well. They couldn't go through Pocatello to then get through Lowe's.
So every agency, if, if we wanted to, I would need to contact all of the different people with cameras that would, in order to get them.
Contact them each time. The, the network would just live within the system. And so when the police department would conduct a search, they would select whether they just want to search Pocatello PD's cameras or if they want to have different groupings, you can set it up that way. But the access is, the access is permanent until it would be taken away if that were to happen. You don't have to ask every time.
So I'm just, I'm just now running down a lawsuit. So I'm just, I'm just now running down a lawsuit and the city of Pocatello gives some information that was owned by Lowe's or by Idaho State University or someone like that. And is that a sticking point that's gonna, gonna create a problem?
I will share that the only reason why Pocatello PD would be accessing Lowe's cameras or information would be for a criminal investigation or public safety purpose. So can't offer legal advice, but as far, that's a, I think, a key point to remember when considering that.
So one of the selling points for me is all these other organizations have these. But if we can't use these cameras, that does us no good, quite frankly, to have Idaho State have theirs, have Lowe's have theirs, have Rick have his. It doesn't really do us any good if we cannot use those in a case. Does that make any sense? So I'm assuming that if, if Twin Falls needed to use those in a case and they contacted the city of Pocatello, what I don't want is the city of Pocatello to be called into court because we shared a third party's camera information.
I mean, the hypothetical. So within the share, because it's part of, because Lowe's is granting you permission to utilize that information and it being part of a criminal investigation, I am not aware of any situation, and I can certainly go back to our legal team and ask if they've run against, run up against this or heard of it. I have not heard of any situation where that evidence was thrown out of court because it belonged to a private entity that had given the department permission to utilize that information.
So once Lowe's, Idaho State University, Rick, Linda give us permission to use their camera footage, then we can use their camera footage if another agency asks for that information?
The other agency would have to directly ask the owner of.
They have to ask those owners.
Correct.
So a lot of times too, this is kind of similar to when we have a theft at a convenience store and they, they provide us with the data. They provide us with the image of the person, the suspect. And then we take that and we will put that out into a bulletin. And if it need be, we put it out to the Fusion Center, which then it goes out statewide. They've provided us with that data. So.
Is that?
Okay.
Just a question on that same topic, if I may. When I went on a ride along, there was a suspected shoplifter at Fred Meyer's at the time, but had also had previous incidents in other stores. But the officer I was with went to Fred Meyer's and went right into Fred Meyer's security office and they burned a CD of the camera footage of that person shoplifting. And then we took that CD and went to that person's house. They had gotten home by that time and, and then, you know, started the questioning and, and the confrontation and, and actually, not right away, but then said, you know, they first allowed, gave them the opportunity to answer questions, but then to see what they would say, but then pull out the CD and say, well, we have you and showing that to them. And, and, but they actually just gave, they made a copy of the CD and gave it to the officer and then that became theirs. And I believe that was used in court. So i- is that kind of a similar situation to what you're talking about? Is that, so they've given us permission?
Yes.
Basically by making our own, not just giving us permission, but making us a copy of it?
My concern, my concern was more of a third party. Twin Falls asked us for information and we're giving information from another party and, and the answer is we cannot do that. They have to ask, Twin Falls asked us?
Yep.
The other party.
When you've got that kind of triangulation.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Rick?
Two things. Who's going to have access to this within the police department? Is this a dispatch center thing? Is this patrol officers? Is this supervisors? Who will be able to dial in?
So it'll be dispatch and all the officers are going to have access to it. But the goal is to have it be officer-focused and centered, right? That it can go from the license plate reader to the officer itself. So if an alert comes up on an officer's computer or phone that says, hey, there's a stolen vehicle at Alameda and Yellowstone, and they're in Alameda and Yellowstone and they see that stolen vehicle, they might not have been aware of that at that time, right? But if we can take dispatch or other people out of it and get it straight to the officer, right? So each officer is going to have their own username and account and they can choose certain alerts that they want to obtain because Flock's doing a great job of giving you a lot of information, right? Sometimes it's like drinking from a fire hose, right? But we want to give them the opportunity to immediately start solving crimes and having that real influx of information.
And second question, where's the nearest service center? If one of our cameras goes down, looking at this map, it looks like Fort Collins. Is, is that, is that the nearest place that would come to do a repair or is there someone else closer?
So, and keep me honest on this, Carolyn. Typically when we get, we proactively monitor the camera's functionality and health. If there is a camera issue, we'll typically be able to diagnose that in about 24 to 48 hours. Oftentimes it's an issue that we can deal with and address remotely. If we do have to have someone come out and physically work on the camera, I'm not sure what that turnaround time is currently, but we have folks that are in the area that can be dispatched or we contract with, with service providers in the area to, to get that camera back up and functioning properly. Something to also note is that even if a camera were to have a, go down or have it have an issue, it will continue to operate. And so once that camera is back online, those images will still be, it is still capturing the images. I don't know precisely where the closest technician lives, but we have techs local to each market that they serve. And the Salt Lake City market is a very strong one for us. So I imagine that we have a tech local to that area, which is not too far. So our turnaround in terms of coming up and sending a tech if we need to, 72 hours, so pretty quick turnaround.
Can you track their license plate?
No, I'm not law enforcement, so I can't.
I'm sure that they have techs in the Salt Lake area because if you've seen the Flock, so when we went down to Ogden and working with Flock, if you see the I-15 corridor, Flock has, I don't know the exact number, but it's got to be near 1,000 cameras.
It's green. It's pretty green.
There's a lot of cameras that Utah uses with Flock.
Okay. Councilmember Mangum?
I think the service that you're describing is, is amazing and needed in our local area. I like how you had mentioned Lowe's across the country has a partnership with you. Is it rare to have private companies such as Lowe's to have Flock cameras? We just had a bank robbery just a few days ago. So, and being a branch manager out of bank here locally, having something like this would be very beneficial to us as, as bank staff to show like this is the vehicle they got to weigh in or whatever the case is. And so is that something that you guys typically do or is it more geared towards law enforcement?
Yeah, I'm glad that you asked that question. And I should have elaborated on this when you asked how we differ from other competitors. So it is very common for businesses or HOAs to get Flock as well, especially when they hear that the police department is on board. Community members, you know, catch wind of it. They see this as a very good thing for their community and they want to help support their law enforcement. So another way that Flock is unique is that we actually have three other teams. We have our law enforcement team, which we're a part of. We have a commercial team and a community safety team that works specifically with HOAs. All three teams are very robust. We are certainly not just limited to Lowe's. I don't think I have the liberty to say the company, but another company very similar to Lowe's will also be coming onto Flock as well. We have partnerships with UPS, FedEx, Enterprise Rent-A-Car. So whether it's, you know, big name stores like that or a bank branch, really any business can get Flock and similar to HOAs as well and school districts.
And we talked about partnerships and that's a big thing. So, you know, the police department, we're not salespeople, right? But I do have a flyer that we can go to partners, you know, and different banks and, and stuff. And we can say, hey, this is where the police department has potentially gone, right? And then this is some information and who you can contact if you would be interested in partnering with us.
Councilmember Paulson?
Do you know where these cameras are manufactured? Are they American, China?
The manufacturer, I, whoa, let me get back to you on that. I don't want to, I feel like there was a small change more recently. And so I can get you that information.
I want to say Thailand.
Thailand. And then I think some components, I don't know if it's LPR, we do have, we work with a factory in Mexico.
Their company headquarters is out of Atlanta.
Okay, yeah.
I have one more question about sharing of data. I was just thinking about the incident that I just told you about with the shoplifting. So when we went to the person's house, it was in Chubbuck. And so on the way, Chubbuck police were contacted and met us there and actually took the lead on talking to the person because the, where the theft was in Pocatello, the person was in Chubbuck. And I'm wondering if you have situations where you're dealing with a situation like that with another agency? And I know you could arrange to share information with that agency, but can it be immediate? Like if something is in process, can that be sped up or would you have to sort of come back to the station and then, you know, make a request and then share information? Or is there a faster?
So as it pertains to Flock, everything is in real time. So if there's an alert, the alert will be delivered to the devices, whether it's their phone, a text message, you can have it on your Apple Watch, smartwatch, your MDT. The alerts will come in in five seconds or less nearly instantaneously. So there's the really proactive piece in getting the alerts in real time. And then also the reactive piece in that somebody could then go back, you know, a day later or an hour later and conduct a search to see if, you know, a vehicle passed by a camera, et cetera. But there is a real-time feature to it with the alerts coming in and, you know, under five seconds.
Okay.
An each user can set up their account accordingly. So maybe Chief doesn't want to get alerts sent to his phone all day. Maybe Lieutenant Archie does and they could set that up accordingly, just based on their user profile.
Okay.
I'd like to request to meet with you guys after this work session to get some information. I think this would be great for my bank specifically. And so I'd love to get some information with you guys if that's all right. Thank you.
That's what you stopped the meeting for.
That's what I stopped the meeting. I'm worried about safety here, sir.
Okay. All right. How long does it take? It looks like a couple of months after we've got things rolling.
I can answer this. So after, after the contract has been signed, we will get to work immediately on submitting for permits. So all of the permits that we will need based on the camera locations, they will require city permits. So not to put this on the city by any means, but if the city can issue permits in a month, we're looking at installation within maybe a month, maybe two after we receive the permits. So the first component is receiving the permits. We can come out and do the actual installation. I will say that Twin Falls, they signed their Flock contract the third week of September. They had their cameras installed last week. So they were able to issue all the city permits within a week. It really just depends on the city. And I will always over, under-promise, over-deliver. But assuming we have a straightforward city permitting process, I think that we could get the cameras up and running after contrast, contract signature within three months.
I think we can handle the permitting in a couple of hours, so.
Fantastic, yes.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yes. We're going to go ahead and, I think that's a good idea. We'll take a break. That way Councilmember Mangum can do what he wants to do here and we'll go from there. So we'll be right back. For joining us after the break, we'll go ahead and continue on with Agenda Item Three. We're moving this meeting right along. Riverside Golf Course Clubhouse Presentation. Representatives from the Parks and Recreation Department and Finance Department will be in attendance to present information and receive council feedback regarding construction of a new clubhouse at Riverside Golf Course. Oh, before we move on though, I, I apologize, council. I should have asked this. I, I think everybody was kind of good with Flock and kind of moving forward with that. I got that feel. Is that kind of where we are? I'm just looking for
Yes, sir.
Kind of moving forward to bring it forward?
I'm skeptical, but as long as the transparency and accountability is very tight.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, I'll let them know to, to move forward, but we need to focus on that. All right. Super. Thank you. Sorry about that. Ann?
Mr. Mayor, sorry. So will we look at the policy prior to trying to roll this out?
We'll figure, we'll figure out what that needs to look like, if it's a policy and then everything else, or if it's all at once.
Okay.
We'll get that figured out. All right. Thank you. Sorry, Ann.
Good morning, Mayor and Council and Butler Parks and Recreation Director. I'm coming here today to talk to you about one of the bigger items on my deferred maintenance list. And that is Riverside Clubhouse. I think, I'm hoping we'll have some opportunities potentially to make this happen. And if they come to fruition, we wanted to make sure you guys were looped in and, and supportive of the project. So just kind of a little brief background, I don't know how many of you golf and how many of you don't. The golf courses are open typically from March to October 31st, weather-dependent. We did get a few more weeks out this year, barely. But that's typically what we're running. Riverside Golf Course is an 18-hole golf course. It's about 6,300 yards from the longest tees for a par of 72. This golf course really offers experiences for all ages and all skill levels. They host a variety of events, tournaments, lessons. We have a great junior golf program. We've talked about in the past with our advisory board when we've come to you. We are, we've had some cool other events, like in the last few weeks, we off, we were able to host the ISU Cross Country Tournament out at the golf course, which was a really cool experience there. But really this golf course is about families and, and it's an affordable way to go out and enjoy. But they do a lot to encourage youth to be able to get out on the courses.
Ann?
Yeah.
We also had the High School State Golf Tournament hosted there this last year or this year.
And that should rotate back around to us again. But there's, I think there's opportunities for other events and things too, if, if we had the right environment, so. Just a little bit about play numbers. I did get those hot-off-the-press numbers from a few weeks ago. As you can see, I wanted to show kind of that COVID number on the chart there, but also kind of where we're at. You can see when COVID hit, we jumped really from around 49,000 rounds up to 60. And I was curious to see if that would go down or not. Kind of plateaued there for a few years, right around that 60,000 round number. And then last year, we took an increase of about 12%. And then we took another increase this year of about 10%. So as you can see, we're growing, which is a good thing. And then, of course, we've showed you a few of these pictures in the past, but the reason we're here today is to talk about this clubhouse. It was a barn. I believe it's approximately 80 years old. It opened, the Riverside Golf Course opened in 1955. Without the owning, I'm projecting it at about 1,600 square feet. It might be 1,800 if we stretch that. It's not very big. And then, of course, you guys are aware that we've had Fort Golf as our concessionaire since 2000. So you can see that middle picture. The golf, the clubhouse leaves a lot to be desired, I guess is the perfect words there. It, it's, it's well-worn. Why is it time to consider building a new one? Well, here's a few ideas that we had. First and most important is that visitor experience. For the golfers that are there every day, it might be enough to grab a sandwich and that's probably about it. It's not a place you're going to hang out. It's not a place you're going to spend hours on end with your friends or close that business deal. We just don't have, it doesn't have the amenities that we need it to have right now to compete with others. It should bring in increased revenue. I'm projecting at least 15%. in increased revenue. I'm projecting at least 15% increase in revenue for goods and services. We can also, we talked about this, we can also serve other type of events. We could have weddings there. We could have function, corporate functions. That all brings more money into the golf course, which brings more money back to us. Modernized facilities, this is a big one for me. That facility is in a spot where we're constantly spending time trying to repair what is old and outdated. Let me give an example. The grease trap. WPC and I are working together to try to deal with the grease trap issue, but there's just nothing left. And it's a big problem. And we can't really offer food service without that grease trap. So, you know, and I'm not even talking about the HVAC systems, heating, cooling, the lighting, all of those things. There's, there's just a lot of things that could modernize this facility in a way that could save us money. Community engagement, you know, obviously, we want people to come to the golf course and enjoy their time there. We want the community on the south end of town to have a place to eat, not just for the golfers, but a place that they could come in and grab some food and enjoy themselves and have a good time. Of course, you know, our, the city's reputation for the golfing industry, if we can bring this clubhouse up to a level that the golfers like to come and enjoy themselves, then we're going to attract golfers from all over the area, from all over the region. Right now, I think we have a fair amount that'll come and play once or twice a year, but we really need to entice them to want to come more often than that. And then just the boost in property values. Obviously, if we take care of the assets that we have, then it works its way out to the residents that live and work around that area. So I think we can do a little bit better job there. The site today, so this is kind of an overview of the location right now. I put a star down at the bottom so you could see that. We do have a lease agreement with the property owner there for additional parking. I think we could do a little bit more to maximize the parking there if we did some work on it with the property owner's permission. If you get one or two trailers that park wrong, it can cause some havoc in that, in that parking area. But you can see on the site plan itself that where the clubhouse sits, we need to basically double the size of that. And you can see, we also have a gas line that runs through there. So we're going to have to maximize our parking, number one. I know in talking with lots of golfers, and I'm sure you guys have spoken to golfers, that patio experience is a big deal for them. They really, in the summertime, want to be able to sit out on the patio and enjoy their time at the golf course. Also, in Pocatello, basements are a cheap way for storage. And I think that would be perfect for underground court, cart storage. We would need some basic electrical down there to charge carts, but it would be a great way to kind of help us with more parking. That bin at the top to the north is where we have cart storage now. So anything we could do to maximize additional parking, I think would be advantageous for us. So the things that I'm looking at and talking with the golf advisory committee and some of you guys and other golfers, is we really need that first impression of this clubhouse. We need the great guest experience. The, the golf courses are in great condition. They're, they're good. They really are. We're talking about the experience when you come into the clubhouse to set that tee time, or you want to have lunch, or you want to hang out with your friends, or you want to have an event there. That's, that's what we're talking about today. We need functional spaces. We need adequate seating. It is a good environment. It's family friendly right now. That wouldn't change. We also need a spot where business people can sit down in the afternoon and close that business deal. A lot of deals are made out on the golf course, like it or not, they are. And I think we could create an environment that's a little bit better for that. Amenities that the clubhouse, a proposed new clubhouse would have, a pro shop, a snack bar, or a lounge. I don't know exactly how that would look. We could flush that out. Underground cart storage, we talked about. Parking, we talked about. Administrative office space, we don't need a ton, but we do need a little bit. We desperately need ADA accessible restrooms in that area. The restrooms are pretty comparable to the rec center right now. So you, you guys know what those look like. They're just not in great condition. We need to find some accessible restrooms in that location. We need some basic storage just for operations. And then potential opportunities, things we can flush out that would potentially give this facility the opportunity to stay open year around would be a dining restaurant, or a sports bar, a lounge, a local restaurant that wanted to expand. Just food service, potentially upstairs, a meeting, a venue space. So that's where we would be really looking to prioritize that view because the golf course is beautiful. And so for different events, they want to be able to look, sit out on the patio, or look down over the top of the golf course and see how pretty it is. And then we could also pursue simulator space, which would give the pros that work at the golf course the opportunity to run year-round teaching lessons. And for someone that's a little bit tentative about golfing or not wanting to learn a simulator, or wanting to kind of learn but uncomfortable to be out on the course, simulator space would be perfect for them to meet with, you know, one of the pros and spend a little bit of time there. It, it could also be an environment where you've got a couple of simulators, and then you have that restaurant upstairs, and they could be waiting to eat, and they could go play for a little while. They could go up and eat. They could go back to play. Kind of like a Topgolf experience where you can do a little bit of both. It would give us an opportunity to do that year-round. Our estimates, construction-wise, this, I went big. It is big. It's double what we have on the main floor and then an upstairs and a basement like we talked about. I, I'm really projecting the projects between 2.5 and $3 million to get it done, get it done right. I think we need to make sure it's big enough to grow into the future. It needs to be big enough to survive the next 30, 40 years. And I think this would do that. If, if we decide to go too small, then we run the risk of not being big enough. And in 10 years, we wished we'd have just done a little bit more. Sponsorship opportunities. We've been working on this and talking with community sponsors. And we're really looking for a 50% buy-in for the naming rights of this facility. So what that would be is potentially 1.5 million. Naming rights, signage, strategic branding opportunities. I think for 1.5, a 30-year exclusive would be about right. For less than that, we'd have to talk about a, a lower term. There's opportunities inside the clubhouse to get a market that they might not be able to catch in other places around town. That could be website signage. That could be on TVs inside the building. We can work with their marketing team and figure that out. I'm also looking at exclusive days for them to have a community, you know, a community event, or a company party, or a tournament, whatever they wanted to do. This would give them us some leverage to talk back and forth and figure that out. I think most of the community partners we have would, would, would love the opportunity to have some time at the golf course. Annual golf passes could be something that we could look at. If they, if the right partner wanted to discuss design, I think we would be happy to include them in our conversation and make sure that it fits kind of what their, their brand is and what their thought process is along with what we're doing. So those are just some of the ideas that we have been presenting as opportunities to, to be the, you know, namesake of the clubhouse here. How do we fund it? So I got these number for, numbers from Gene last week. He had a projection on interest earned. So there's the total what he, what he's earned in FY25 in interest. He had a budget of about $3 million, just a little more than that of what he projected. So you can see that we are over what the, his projections of interest were, minus some dollars for the police retirement. That leaves about 2.3 million in interest earned this year. So that would be an avenue that we could potentially fund a clubhouse, or at least our portion of a clubhouse, if we found the right community partner. And that's all I have for you. Do you have questions for me?
Councilmember Cheatham.
Two or three. You talked about a 15% potential revenue increase. Are you looking at an increase in play? Are you looking at a, oh, a net increase of all operations?
I'm looking at an increase of all operations. I know tee time wise, we are maximizing the peak times. We do have plenty of opportunities in the weekdays, in the afternoons, to fill some more slots on a, from a play perspective. But if we potentially have a restaurant that's open year-round, that people, you know, frequent, or those simulators, we would definitely be looking at an increase of goods and services at the 15, or potentially more.
Is, is it time for a peak hour rate increase?
I don't know. It's something we could look at. I would probably rely on Fort Golf to tell me kind of where they're at and what they're doing. Right now, so, right now, the fee structure is built with them in our contract that they cannot exceed the CPI annually. So that's why you've seen just meager increases, except for the one year where CPI was pretty high. So that's why we've been able to keep the cost down. But they're the ones really looking at that and evaluating the dollars in for tee times.
If I may continue, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned branding, not just Riverside, but also Highland. I wonder if that's compromising a potential opportunity down the road when Highland needs something done to that?
You know, I think that contract with a potential suitor would say that you have the exclusive naming rights to Riverside with some opportunities at Highland, but knowing if we need to rebuild that and have a partner, maybe for, number one, maybe that same partner is willing to do the other one. And maybe it's someone different, but we would make sure that we would write in some verbiage to say, hey, we would welcome you. The other part of it is we would be looking at industry too. You know, for example, if I had a financial institution, maybe Simplot would be a better partner for the next one so they wouldn't conflict with each other. We would be also looking at that opportunity. I don't want to conflict with the snack bar downstairs with who, the food service we have upstairs. If they're both only serving hamburgers, then that doesn't really benefit us. So we would be looking at opportunities to expand those both.
If I may continue. Can you break down the 70-odd thousand rounds of play between the two courses?
I can. I didn't bring that for me. I didn't bring that with me today. I think they're fairly comparable, other than Riverside gets a little bit of an edge because it's flat. So a lot of people like to play Riverside over Highland if they get to choose. But some recognize in town, you know what, I'm going to go play Highland because it might be a little bit less busy at peak, or they are playing, you know what, this is the time I can go play, whichever one has the tee time that I need. Then they decide that way.
One last question. In your financing formula, you, that 5 point, was it 5.9?
5.4.
5.4. That was fiscal year '24 interest earned. Rates are going down. Is, are those numbers going to hold? Or are we investing? This may be better a question for Gene.
Come on up, Gene.
I, I'm just a little bit anxious about whether these will be good numbers down the road.
I think the, I think the idea is to use this, this money that we've, the unanticipated money that we have already received. So we're not looking into the future of doing this, but, but what we already have, that was already unanticipated, and be able to break out a million and a half dollars out of that.
My concern is, every construction project we've seen of late has run over, sometimes dramatically. So whether these rough numbers now that you, that we've been able to lay out, if there would be an opportunity, or if those numbers might hold closely, so we could anticipate additional revenue if we decided to enhance the design, or if there was, you know, giant boulders underneath this whole thing, we're trying to start digging an underground facility.
So Gene Hill Finance Department, number one on interest rates, a couple of things is, we used a lot of the interest rate, right, for the budget in fiscal year '25. So there'll, I think there'll be a little bit of excess, but not nearly like we have here. And as far as interest rates, you know, on the front end, you know, the yield curve is where you look at the different positions of where yields are at on the market, right? On the front end, the Fed has the ability to control basically Fed funds rate. So they can, right now, it's, you know, I think it's five and a, or four and a quarter, 450. And we anticipate that. I think that's going to come down to 3, 375. But what they don't control is the two to the on-out, because that's what the market dictates. And we actually saw an incident a couple of months ago where the 10-year Treasury went out and just about failed because the market's saying, we need more return on our money. In the 30-year in Japan, and I know getting into currencies and stuff like that, a 30-year actually failed because the market was demanding more money or more return. And so I think we may see the front end of the curve drop, which we may have to change our investment strategy a little bit, which is fine. But I think we can still maintain interest returns in the area of 4% to 4.5% without too much trouble.
What, what's this based on?
That's based off about 5.25. And those are actual numbers. Those are not, those are actual numbers, not projections. That's what we actually earned. And the LGI peak, you know, it was about 5, 5.25.
Thank you.
Council President?
Not a finance question, but I was just wondering if we could maybe save some money by chopping down the mayor's favorite trees that are in the way to use for lumber?
That's how we're saving money right now, is the trees I'm cutting out, so we're not having to pay somebody else to do it.
They have holes. They won't work.
That's right. I don't hit the ball that hard. So, counsel, I, what I would really like to do, counsel, with your permission, is I would like to push forward with this. I would like to set 1.5, maybe 1.75 million aside right now for, of this, to $2 million so that we can get moving. But I think we need to get a design. I think we need to get an idea of what it's really going, going to cost. And so I would like to move forward. This is something we need to do. Every year we talk about Riverside Golf Course. And that window, bowling, and maybe you get a break, is this the year that we shatter glass throughout the golf course or not? You know, it's sinking. We really do need to do something here. And so I would like, I don't need a motion. I just, just would like to, to move ahead and, and get a design put together so that we can, we can move forward. We do have a corporate partner that I, we visited, I believe, is 97, 98% confident that they're going to jump on board. But we, we need a design. They need to really know what it's going to look like before we do anything. So.
Mr. Mayor, you know what? I think in addition to designing a clubhouse, we need to look at the layout of where all this is going to go and how we're going to continue to do operation while the construction's underway. And I think we need that plan so that we can give, you know, our partner out there an idea of how they can continue in business. Because this thing's going to take a year or two to put together.
Absolutely.
And they've been really good to us to keep this thing going without costing the city a lot of money.
Well, I know we've talked with them extensively, and they have a plan of being able to keep it operational and keep it moving. My biggest concern is not necessarily them keeping it moving, because we have to go in and, and level this clubhouse and then start building. So we'll need to bring in a trailer, is what they say, bring in a trailer for a year. The sooner we can get this going, the better. If we can get this moving forward and get a plan by the end of the year, in the spring, they can probably, hopefully would be able to start something. And we would be, they would be interrupted this next year, but hopefully by the time '27 season rolls around, you would, they would be up and running and everything would be good to go. The biggest concern I have, and, and Ann touched on it just a little bit, if you look at that, that site that we have today with the star, that's kind of our parking.
Yeah, that's one of my concerns.
And I think that we need to do some upgrade, work with the, the, the landowner there, do the upgrades, and make it so that the parking is very clear of how you park and what you do there. We have to maximize that parking space so we can do this effectively this next summer, is what we would have to do. And so I think that would be part of the plan, at least in my, my vision. I don't know what Ann's thinking, but my vision would be we, we do that. We get a plan put together. We, it's going to cost us some money to do so. Get, get that money, put a plan together, do what we need to do with this so that we can maximize everything and, and move forward with this. It's just, it's something that just needs to be done.
Do you anticipate that this would, in any way? Do you anticipate that this would in any way cause problems with the tee boxes and greens that are immediately adjacent to where this clubhouse is located?
We've talked about a few ideas on one of the holes. The true golfers didn't necessarily like the idea, but otherwise I would say no. It was just an idea that I had, but I don't know that I want to. The idea I had is make the eighteenth hole a par four instead of a par five, which is expensive to move a green, but it would allow us quite a bit more room and to maximize a little bit of green space to the north. To me, it'll probably come down to what the architect really thinks is the best fit for the space that they have.
Is this going to be a golf course architect?
What was that question?
Are you anticipating using a golf course architect?
I don't think so. I think it would just be a standard architect. Of course, I'd be asking, you know, do you have any experience designing a clubhouse? I know any of our local architects would probably love to design this project.
I think for the course, you needed
Yeah.
A special designer, but for the clubhouse.
If you're going to move that green and stuff, although that hole eighteen is, is it eighteen or nine now? They switched them up.
I thought it was eighteen, maybe.
Maybe it's eighteen. That hole eighteen, you've got a dog leg left, then a dog leg right, then a dog leg left. I mean, going back and forth like this, it wouldn't hurt to, I mean, it fits great with my swing, because but but it's, you know, but that would that would, I think, would take a golf course architect to do that. But for a building itself, I don't I don't think so.
I'm just wondering if things like cart storage, is there anything peculiar about cart storage?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Underground like that, is I going to take any expertise?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think that they would have to.
I don't believe so. I know a lot of clubhouses have some storage underneath them. I think it's really just having the power needed to make sure we each space has enough to, electric carts is kind of where we're headed, so to make sure that there's enough power down there.
And any firm would just ask you at length what the needs are. I mean, that's what architecture firms do.
You would hope.
They should, yeah.
The other thing is if by chance, if you funded the clubhouse and it was built kind of where the existing one is, and you had to have more parking, that doesn't mean we couldn't look at other landowner property or potentially changing that hole in the future to make more parking or maximizing, you know, if there's a little more green space to the north that we can pave, we can we can look at all those options as well.
Yeah. Okay. Linda?
I just wanted to comment that Rick and I have been on this council seven years, and this has come before us
Every year.
Every year. And the golf committee has been like begging us to do this. There's been financial reasons as to why we haven't done it yet. We all know it needs to be done, but I think if we have the money and we have a way to get it done and we have, you know, hopefully a willing partner ready to go, then this is the time to do it. And I understand that the estimate is high, you know, and we look at that, we're like, ooh, you know, and it's higher than we've seen before. But I also think it's really important, not just to get this done, but to get it done right and to have it be everything it can be so that it's, you know, at least forty or fifty years that we don't have to do this again. I think the dining is one of the most important aspects of this, because heading out that way, it's, there's basically two places you can go, and I think we need more options and more and more people, you know, live out there and there's development. So there needs to be services and especially dining options. So and that's a potential year round use and year round revenue. So I like that you've come with a plan to move forward, but I also like a lot of the specifics in the plan, and I just think it's time to get this done, and I'm very excited to move forward, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty. Councilmember Mingham?
I remember there was a design, meeting with the golf advisory committee, there was a design or some drawings that were put together several years ago. When looking at that, is that something that we're looking at using or are we going completely brand new?
So it was really conceptual. It was very small. They did, I evaluated it, I sat down with the golf advisory committee and we went through it, but they were doing everything they could to make sure it was the least amount possible. And they were just on the edge of the building code, class B building code. And I'm like, you know, if that would mean if we built it too small, the second we needed to add a little bit more, we would need fire suppression and this and that. And we just need to build it right the first time.
So follow up. So the current facility we have, it doesn't match code, correct? It's must be grandfathered?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got a couple down here that says, yeah, let's spend some money and move forward with it. It sounds like we've got that, so let's move forward, let's get a plan going, let's get this moving forward so we can we can see this actually happen, so we can present it to the the corporate sponsor that has a lot of interest in it right now, so, yes.
Tournament play is a big deal. I've put some tournaments on out there, and that's something that that property does not readily lend itself to. When you start setting out prizes and trying to put scoreboards up, and I think that not just the building we need to design for, but that whole piece of land to accommodate what's where modern golfing is going.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Hundred percent agreed.
And our community does a lot of golf tournaments and fundraisers.
Every weekend on every course.
When I, yeah, oh, absolutely, there is. But what what I think about this also is we've got the twenty forty plan, our planning department worked so hard with. This is a parks and recreation thing and
Most important.
Hands down, without a question, parks and recreation was the most important thing that they people were looking at. And so it's something that needs to happen. So we'll move forward with it. Let's get moving with getting an RFQ out to to architects and stuff, and let's see what we can, what we can come up with the design wise and go from there. Okay? Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to agenda item number four, as National Park Service, NPS, Save America Treasures Grant Application for Brady Chapel Restoration and Repair. Planning and Development Services Department, staff members will be in attendance and will seek council's feedback regarding grant application for National Park Service. NPS, Save America's Treasures SAT Program, an NPS SAT grant would provide necessary funding to complete the final phase of the James H. Brady Memorial Chapel Restoration and Repair Projects. Are these the same things? They're not.
There's, good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's two handouts. One is the budget for the grant, and the other is just a summary. I did want to just provide some photos today. Several of you were in attendance at the ribbon cutting we had for the first phase completion of the Brady Chapel work that we were able to fund in fiscal twenty four. So just for historical sake, this is the grand opening of the chapel, I believe it was nineteen twenty two. So you can see what the original facility looked like there and all those folks gathered out front for for this event. As mentioned, we completed phase one work. This has been a long time in the making. The chapel was turned into a public meditation chapel in the sixties, and then subsequent kind of neglect and disrepair happened over several decades. And so several groups in the community, including the Historic Preservation Commission, the city, Friends of the Brady Chapel, have been working to raise funds and acquire grants to complete some of this restoration work. From the work from twenty sixteen to last year, we were able to use city funds along with several grants to complete this phase one exterior repair, which also included some temporary roof repairs. We discovered a pretty significant water infiltration area. And so that was the the first phase of the work completed that we all invested in for the chapel. And so here's a photo today. You can see those pinnacles installed, that exterior has been cleaned, and there's still a number of other items that need to be addressed, but just wanted to highlight some of the work we were able to complete in this first phase. You can see those pinnacles and finials reinstalled on the exterior of the chapel there. And that's a kind of nice zoomed in photo there. Those were in storage for quite some time, waiting to be reseated onto those pillars. So it's exciting to see it coming back into its original look. Before you today, I'm just presenting this information on this National Park Service grant. This is the Save America's Treasures Grant that's funded through NPS, and they are offering minimum grants of one hundred twenty five thousand and maximum grants of seven hundred fifty thousand with a one to one match, so you'd have to cover fifty percent of the project costs if you're awarded. The grants are due in on December twelfth with a projected award notice of next August, and then a grant agreement would be signed roughly six months later in February of twenty twenty six, and the awardee would have between two and three years to complete the project. So for this next phase, it would really, the grant would cover the final phase of work that's been projected for the chapel, which is all of our interior stone and brick work that needs to be completed, the lighting upgrades and replacement, the new electrical service to the chapel, which would help provide the radiant floor heating, which would weatherize the interior so we don't see that deterioration continue, the roof replacement, gutter repairs, window and door repairs, and making the facility ADA accessible. And so here's just a few photos of current conditions of some of the gutters and the roof. There is, as you'll note, an asphalt single roof on the building currently. I believe that was installed in the nineties. We don't have an exact record, but the actual roof would be a, the replacement would be in a slate style, probably not actual slate, but they have a replica material that's approved by the State Historic Preservation Office that we would replace the roof so it looks historic in its original condition. There's some of the interior brickwork that's deteriorating, so as that hot and cold moisture gets in there, it really erodes this masonry work on the interior. And with no HVAC or weather control at this time in the facility, that's going to continue to happen. We did do those exterior repairs, but this moisture infiltration from either the roof or just the lack of temperature control continue to deteriorate that. And that's on the left photo is some of that additional damage to that brickwork. And then around this window, you can see the side bricks also experiencing that that damage. You can see here in this photo the kind of status of the lighting as it exists today. There's also the carpeted floor, which we would remove, install the radiant flooring and repair that concrete floor. And just a few more images here of the lighting, and you can see kind of that that staining on that brickwork inside. And this is a shot of the front of the the front of the building, so you can see that kind of doorway that would need to be refinished, the windows. And then we would come up with a design for ADA access that is approved both by SHIPPO and meets our ability for folks to use the public space and is ADA compliant. So it would require some reworking of this front area, potentially the green space, to ensure that there's ADA compliant access, but it doesn't alter the facade of the building beyond its, you know, original historic look. And so that, as noted, the grant is due on the twelfth. Our current budget shows the project at roughly around three hundred ninety nine thousand eight hundred dollars. So the federal share would cover just under two hundred thousand, and the city would be responsible for the remaining approximately two hundred thousand dollars in match. There's a number of grants that we could seek throughout the process to reduce that city match, and we've also been working closely with Myers Anderson Architects. They provide a lot of in-kind services for this work, created drawings and things, and helped put together cost estimates over the years. So they would be able to continue doing in-kind services, which could be contributing toward the match. The Friends of the Brady Chapel have applied for a grant toward the roof that they'll hopefully hear about in the next six weeks or so. And as I mentioned, there's other grants that we could pursue. Where this project can take place over three fiscal years, we could also budget out the match costs over fiscals twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight. So there are a number of avenues to work to reduce that match request. But at this stage, addressing the interior work and the roof are critical to ensuring that that first phase investment is maintained and we can continue to preserve the building and get it open for public use and have it as a usable space again for the community.
So ideally, the overall project will be completed in August of twenty eight, correct? Is that what we're seeing? Okay.
Yes, that would be the the timeframe if we were successful with this grant award.
So is there a phase on what it looks like? And I might be reading this wrong. So we're awarded the grant, and the project has to be expended in phases or it has to be completed in phases? Or is this just our timeframe?
It would be a two to three year timeframe. It wouldn't have to be any more phases. We originally phased the project because of the cost with the idea of paying for it exclusively with donations. However, that has not proven to be very successful, because it takes a long time to acquire those donations unless you have one kind of large private investor. So from twenty sixteen or so to about now, the Friends and other entities, HPC, were able to acquire donations, and we used city facade funds to get that first phase, the exterior restoration, done. And so the remaining components that you're seeing here today would be other phases. But where they're so intertwined, and this grant opportunity could cover all those expenses, we would just call it the final phase. So it wouldn't, and it wouldn't quite make sense to break it out any further, perhaps some of the minor painting and repairs like that, but where you have the electrical and the roof and all that, you know, weatherization, interior work that need to be done, it makes sense to do it all at once to get it fully sealed up and ready to be used.
So it could go, so if we did get awarded this grant, it could be done before August of twenty eight? Possibly. Or no?
Possibly. I would, we would have to do kind of a design period and then go into construction. You could work on the interior in the cold weather months, but just, you know, knowing how the construction seasons work and getting bids out and things like that, I'd feel more comfortable with that two to three year range as opposed to trying to expedite that timeline too much. But we, yeah, once we get the grant award, you know, we'll get going on on the project immediately.
Thank you.
Council President?
I'm really thrilled to see this, because I know, you know, the idea behind coming up with the phases in order to sort of break down that massive number that we were facing to fundraise, you know, that was the plan in the beginning, but the fundraising is just, I mean, it's ongoing and there's money raised, but it's small amounts. And at that rate, it's going to take so long to achieve the the amount we need. So to be able to get a grant and even then to find potential sources to cover the match to really get this down to a number that will allow us to move forward and get this done, I think is great, because what I'm worried about with the original approach is we completed phase one, but if it takes so long to get through, I believe we had five phases, by the time you get to the end, the work you did in the beginning is probably already starting to need work done again. I just think it's drawing, it would draw it out so much that this will allow us to really get it done quickly and get it done well and and just have this asset, not only that would be then open to the public and people could use it and everything, but it could be a revenue generator, you know, it could be rented for events and things like that. So that was always the idea, is to get this to be a money maker. But the sooner we can do that, the better. So thank you for doing the So thank you for doing the research and finding this and, and the application. And I strongly support it. I want to see this asset. And actually, Anne mentioned in the previous presentation with the clubhouse, the responsibility that we have to take care of our assets. And I think this is one of our greatest assets that we have. And I just want to see it back to its original glory and, and, but also usable and open. And so I'm 100% behind this, maybe 110%, and I thank you for finding all of this.
Okay, Rick?
Is this grant, is this an all or nothing grant? Or could it be partially funded? Can you look in your crystal ball and give a reading whether you either get it or you won't? Or maybe get part?
My understanding is they would fund what you applied for as long as it was within that funding range. I think they're going to issue, I believe it was 50 or 55 awards. So, you know, I'm hoping we're competitive. It's, our project ask is on the lower end of that minimum-maximum range. And I'm not sure how many, you know, historic sites in Idaho would be applying. But I think these opportunities are far and few between for this type of grant, for this type of work. So I think it's worth us trying to go for it and get the funding where it would cover 50% of these project costs. With these federal grants, it does come with, you know, the strings that are attached. And so on the budget spreadsheet, you can see we've added to our estimates an increase for the Davis Bacon Wage Rate that we'd have to pay for the construction work. But even with that, it's $50,000 that would add to project costs technically. So you'd still be looking at $250,000 that the city alone would have to pay versus with this grant, you're, you're looking at $100,000, so far less than that. So even with that federal regulation with the added cost that comes with that, it still saves the city money on the overall project costs. So, but yeah, I'm not sure on the Park Service. I haven't applied for or received a Park Service award since being here. But hopefully they'll look favorably upon the application. And I don't see any reason why they would do a partial award. I think it would be a full award. I didn't see anything in the no-fo about that.
One follow-up, Mr. Mayor. Is this final phase scope that you handed out, are those in order of priority?
Not exactly. I would say that the roof and the brickwork and then the HVAC are the, are the top priorities.
When I was out there Monday, I was surprised at how badly deteriorated the woodwork is around the windows and the front door and how badly they've been exposed to the elements and are not doing well.
Yeah, which also, the longer we take, the more those deteriorate. I did have one quick comment. You mentioned the grants, the, the possible grants for this project are few and far between. And that is the other thing that the Friends of the Brady Chapel have worked hard on. One is trying to fundraise, and that has proven to be very difficult for this project, but also looking for grants. And Christina has worked closely with the Friends to find those grants. And there's not a lot out there that, that fits, that, you know, that our project fits the requirements of the grant or that the grant fits our needs, you know? So that's another reason, I think, to jump on this opportunity because they are few and far between.
So Council, this is going to come in front of you on the next council meeting.
The first of December.
First of December, not the next one, the first of December. So, but we wanted to get it in front of you now because there was a city match for you to contemplate. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll, we'll move to agenda item number five is Bannock Development Corporation update. Mia Kate Kennedy, the first, representing Bannock Development Corporation, BDC, will be in attendance to give Council an update of BDC's activities and achievements.
Hello, Council. Thank you for having me. We were worried I might not get in this one because I have jury duty and about 14 other things on my schedule. And so it's been a little crazy. And the first thing I want to talk about is the end of election slowdowns. So for economic development and for lots of other departments, but especially economic development, we're very driven by election slowdowns, excuse me. And for the last at least 12 months, pretty much all of our recruiting, businesses, meetings, et cetera, have been on an election slowdown cycle and as well as with interest rates. So everybody always cites the interest rates and lack of being able to get construction crews and, and not even thinking ahead until these elections are over, however they go. Bannock Development is a neutral party. So we can continue regardless, but it does make a difference. And I think it's just something I wanted to bring up in case you hadn't thought of it. Oftentimes nationally, as EDs, we look at projects that could be pretty big or look at those projects as a strategy. For example, energy or clean energy or clean projects or green projects. So obviously with the change of administration, those, there's going to be a shift there. And that greatly affects us in who we're recruiting, especially in manufacturing and also in other areas of energy, et cetera. So the slowdown has been really hard on all of us waiting because basically nobody's been moving. Now that the election has been, is over and we will start a new administration, and I don't want to speak to whether that'll be better or worse or, I have my own opinions, but we're a neutral party, but it does change what our focus is because that's where the money, we follow the money. And I know Christine probably does too with grants, et cetera, so she can understand. So I just want to say, now that we're at the end of election slowdowns, of that slowdown, I'm really feeling encouraged in 2025 that we're moving back into that cycle. I always think about it like training for a marathon. And we've been training and training and there's no marathon to attend, right? So we kind of got fat again. And I've never ran a marathon. I, I used to run some time ago, but I'm just anticipating that that's what would happen to me. But that is kind of what happens to us EDs as well. So we try to pick projects over the last year, year and a half that we could move forward with despite the election slowdowns and put into place infrastructure, et cetera, that could prepare us for this new cycle that is coming up where we'll actually be running the marathon. So there's that. The next, so I'm really encouraged. I guess I just want to put the message that Bannock Development as our EDO, I'm super encouraged about this next cycle because we are seeing more interest by businesses and in recruitment efforts to actually get people interested and start talking again about, could you bring jobs here, your business and what those developments look like. The next thing on my list is the symposium. So we had, Bannock Development had a sort of private symposium where we had stakeholders, et cetera, invited. All of you are invited. The symposium, we decided, we met with ISU and other economists throughout the state. And we had been talking about this for some time. ISU put on their first symposium last year on economics. And the really important message to take away from this from me to you today is that over the next 18 months, we, I really want to impress upon not only my board and also stakeholders and community members, but everyone, including the businesses that are looking here, that we're going to put a very high mark on the economic data. And we haven't, not to say that we haven't done that in the past, but we haven't had a good place to collate similar data. So we might get data from the state and then we get local Southeast Idaho and then we get Boise's. And so we're chasing different numbers all the time. But we, over the last year, have really come together and collaborated. And I feel like the universities have been really instrumental in their economics in helping us EDOs and economic developers in what the projection looks like for economics. And why is that important? Because we set the strategic plan on what they're, what we should be focusing on. So not only should we look at a marketing standpoint, which I'll talk about in a minute, which we, we did that homework. Now I want to impress upon the fact that y'all now, from here on out, hear me relate more to the economics and what the economics are telling us that we should be chasing and, you know, what marathon we should join. So we decided with our symposium, because we have so many events that go on that are very business valuable, but there's lots of chamber events and lots of other events, we decided to combine our symposium with theirs at ISU. And it's, it was kind of a last-minute decision for this year, but I think it's still going to be very beneficial for us. And Carl and Iris at the university are amazing. They're brilliant and they have really great numbers and ideas about our area. They do immense research and study. If you haven't had a chance to meet them, you can meet them at the symposium that they did talk last year. And they're just, they're really great at being able to get the data for our area. And so to me, that's really important because last year I attended our national convention and the most compelling speakers at that convention and, and our get-together was for 97 of us and then the state, that the economists that talked from University of Idaho were super instrumental in giving us ideas on where we should focus. They actually helped us on our side. But ISU has taken a huge leap forward and they're really looking in our area. Not that they weren't before, but we're actually using that data now more. We don't have to go to the state and go to University of Idaho, but they're amazing too. I mean, they're all great. So we have all these new sources that we're collaborating on a little bit more. And it's really helped us, give us a better direction and idea of the types of industries and the types of jobs and the types of movement that we will see in housing and people moving here and what strategies we need to use to attract all of that. So it's more numbers-driven now. And I feel more comfortable that we actually have really good science and research behind it, where before we were kind of running around because we weren't as collaborative. And Commerce is, is very, working very hard. They have very new staff and, and they're doing a really good job of trying to figure out what our needs are so that we can get out there and get these recruitments going and these jobs here and these homes built, et cetera. So the symposium will be January 24th. It's a long symposium. I would encourage people to attend the full symposium because they're going to do a whole health sector. I will talk. Some of our people that we would have in ours are going to talk on the labor sector. That's super important. And then I'll have a portion about Bannock Development. And at the end, it's from nine, I believe, to 1:30. Don't quote me on that, but I know at 1:30, we will be doing a big announcement about some of our projects that we're going to go public with. So it's super exciting. We've been working behind the scenes at Bannock Development for more than two years on a couple of these. And so it's just really fun for me to finally be able to be open about some of the things that we're looking at, and this will be a really exciting announcement. So at 1:30, at the end of the symposium, we will make those announcements and we'll also roll out our marketing project. So let's just talk about the marketing project a little bit. The marketing project started well over a year ago. We have completed that project. We're just in the process of getting our manual. And we did agree on a regional logo that we will market with our collaborative partners, which would be counties, cities, other, other EDOs, et cetera, and our stakeholders and investors to use this logo alongside of their own to promote our area so that we can get the recognition and eyes on us that we need in this very big marathon-running cycle that's starting up. And so I'm really excited that we'll have that marketing piece finally on top of that. And that project will roll that out at that meeting as well. So we've got a lot ahead in just, you know, a little bit over a month or 60 days. And so I'm super excited about that. And that's a really important thing for you guys to keep in mind because that will sort of highlight some of the bigger projects that we're going to work on going forward. And it also kind of helps our future as to what we're looking at next. Every year, Bannock Development sits down in December and we do, I give my recommendations for what those strategies will be for next year. I try to pick five things and really focus on two or three. Those are big bites of what we would focus on to recruit. And then we sort of direct dollars to the projects that we have going first and get those to completion. And obviously with this announcement that's coming up and bigger projects, a lot of the focus will be there while we facilitate that project. But in the meantime, and this is something that most of you know, we always have these other projects going on. We have about 40 of them going on at any one time throughout the year. And so that could be a business that wants us to come in and help them, partner up, find them money, help them with growth and expansion. And so we're always working on these on, in the background and they take quite a bit of our local time. And then we do a lot of other things like recon and other business things that we're working on. So we'll probably have about 40 of those again next year. It usually runs about that much. I always put 100 as my goal. So if I could ever get some more staff, I would like to do 100 of those because I think there's a lot out there that we can be doing. We don't turn anyone away. We've not had to turn anyone away. Somehow we've been able to make it work out. And I don't see that that's ever going to stop, but I just think it would be easier on me. That's kind of selfish, but. So the marketing project rollout, I'm working off data over the next 18 months. Super important for us. And then future business recruitment's the last thing I want to talk about. And that is that sort of list of five strategy. Once we get that, we will make that public. Recently, we opened our first podcast. So we, we currently have a Portnitz Valley Pod. That's the podcast where we talk to Dennis from downtown. And it was a great podcast. I would encourage everyone to watch it. And I think we're, we're heading into doing another one this next week. And we're going to continue these podcasts on our social media and our website to help our, not just our local area, but also businesses in the outside area to look at what we have going on here. These are really good sell, sellable podcasts that businesses that are interested and inquire with me, we can direct them to these and they watch them and they're like, oh, we didn't have any idea that this was going on or that we could do this or that. And so it's, there's tons of podcasts out there. I watch a zillion of them myself in my, like, in my dreams. So I think it's a really good thing that we're working with a marketing person on that.
What was the name of it?
It's, it's Portnitz Valley Pod, so just P O D, yeah. And we, we had all kinds of different names and some of them didn't line up very good. And we wanted it to be podcast, but it was too long. And so that's what we have for right now. And those will roll out quite often. And we have a couple other marketing things that we're doing, but we will roll out a major marketing project with the marketing info that we collected. And we'll do that with our partners. So that won't be something that we're doing at Bannock Development, but we will be facilitating that for all of us. Super excited about that. Also, we were, kind of the delay in it was sort of serendipitous because now we have Pocatello's new logo and a sort of your theme. So, you know, we could keep that in mind when we're doing that and that's always easy for us to do. We'll be meeting with the county and with Chubbick Mayor and their planning and development. We've taken part in quite a few of their sessions. We've taken part in quite a few of their sessions to get our opinions on the growth and things that they're working on. We will get that ahead of making the strategic plan. And then, like I said, the next time I visit you, after the symposium, because you're all invited and coming, next time I visit you then, and I'm not sure when that even is, Connie, Connie will keep me on track, but I'll give you what the strategies are so that you can see what we've chosen to focus on. So that's actually all I have, but I entertain any questions. I have visited with some of you in the last quarter, so that's been fun. But do you guys have any questions or comments?
Questions? See, and then, oh, we got one.
Just a quick one on the, using that marketing data that you've gathered to develop the strategy. And I know you said you were having different meetings with people, but who exactly is working to develop the strategy? Is that you and staff? Or is that, is there a committee or?
Well, they put together, you, you guys, yeah, you guys put together, you guys, some of you attended the marketing meetings. And the actual marketing company that you worked with, they are putting together the manual and their suggestions. And then we'll take that and we'll meet with stakeholders to ask them on that piece what we're going to do with that. So you'll be getting, we'll go back through the stakeholders, and we'll probably just ask people if they want to. People right now are working on all kinds of marketing stuff in every sector, I swear, of this city and county. And so we want to be able to be on board because we spent a lot of money on this. Everybody did on these marketing things. And we want to be able to be on board with how we do that. So, you know, we'll invite you to that, and we'll do that. Our economic development strategy is always done in December. I submit that so that we can have that economic development strategy set for our budget for the new year. So it's a little separate, but we will focus on those things in our marketing plan. And we'll facilitate it so we'll keep everybody on board because there isn't another organization that does that. So we'll just make sure, once we roll it out, we will, you know, make sure everybody's on board with it. And we may not have, maybe we'll only have like 12 collaborators at first that are using the logo and using the same message and using the marketing. But we're hoping that that will grow with everyone so that we're all giving the same message out there. And that gives us a much, gets the outside world a much bigger picture of what our assets are here.
Super. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have fun at jury duty.
Yeah, have fun at jury duty. Okay, we'll move to agenda six, is council advisory board updates. This time it's been set aside for the mayor and council members to give an update of their recent advisory board activities. Let's start, where did we start last time?
We started, Rick.
We started, Rick, last time. Let's start down here.
I'll kick us off. The Gulf Advisory Committee has, we had our last meeting last month, if I remember right. And we won't pick up again until March. But with the information we just received about the clubhouse, I think that the committee will be excited. Neighbor Works Pocatello just had their annual meeting, big banquet dinner to talk about the projects that have been going on. They've got some great projects that are still continuing to go on with Bonneville Commons and some of the other neighborhoods. Everything's moving well. They're in the process of some fundraising right now. And so you can go to their website or contact Mark Dahlquist at Neighbor Works about that. The other is the Housing Authority. They are moving along very well. They've got some projects in the works that they're looking at, trying to create some new partnerships with local homeowners or apartment owners and landlords to where they can start to manage properties on people's behabes. Also looking at doing some things to help benefit some of our local veterans and our homeless population. They have a pantry that they are getting ready to start rolling out that'll be open to the community right there at their resource center on Fifth, Fourth, on Fourth. It used to be the old car wash right there. So they're looking forward to revamping that whole thing and getting that pantry running and to start accepting donations. And things are moving good there.
Super, thank you. Councilmember Post.
So CDBG, this is, this is from October, so some of these might be done. But eight more units in progress for lead removal. The Healthy Homes Supplemental Program, 17 are completed and 68 applicants received. There's about $12 million in other grant applications. The Bonneville Project is done. 780 ramps, 1,700 feet of sidewalk replacement. Good project, all finished. And there are 14 more grants in progress for rehab projects and one loan in progress. SICA. Food's expensive. Meals on Wheels is struggling. But the deficit is decreasing, so that's good. We sold Duplex, and so now there's about $100,000 in an emergency fund. Housing and Urban Development, so they're very impressed with what SICA is doing. And they're encouraging another grant application for about $50,000. Nine lots are for sale for our buyers. Let's see, oh, and the goal, just hopefully before it gets too cold, to have three more foundations built for the new housing. And with Idaho Department of Health and Welfare, one of the quotes is "coming in with a buzzsaw." A lot of nonprofits are considering lobbyists to go to Boise. There's 118 units in Pocatello, 24 in Blackfoot. And the most exciting thing, which is not good, but a spurned lover spray painted some very obscene things at SICA Manor on the wall outside. It's all fixed, but there you go.
Yeah.
And then haven't had parks yet, and childcare was canceled last week.
Okay, super, thank you. I can give you a real quick update on the MIAC. The meetings this time of year, with the holidays landing where they land, they get all messed up. So I honestly don't know if our next meeting is this coming Monday or if it's the Monday after that. But we meet twice a month, and they're going to continue to try to do that through the holidays. But I can't tell you exactly what those dates are, but I know they've changed a couple of them. They are meeting to do some things like stuffing socks, which sounds weird, but we go over to, I believe it's SICA, and they put a bunch of Christmas gifts and things in stockings and to give to the needy and stuff. So it's kind of a neat project for them to do. And they have three or four other things that they're working on that way. This food pantry out here, I don't know if anybody's ever spent any time to look at it. We've got two food pantries run out in the parking lot here, one over by the rec center. The rec center doesn't get used as much, but this one gets used often. And we'll fill it full today and tomorrow, there's a good chance it'll be empty. And so we're checking it and doing it all the time. And we've got some great corporate partners that are continuing to help fund that and continuing to help get the product, food in there. We, this one out here, oftentimes, you'll see that it's running low or you'll push food in it, and then you'll go out to check it, and there'll be a whole bunch of other food in it. So we have members of our community that's also coming and just stocking it individually, which is absolutely incredible to have a community that's willing to do something like that. And so those have been very successful. Linda.
I was just gonna comment on one positive thing regarding SICA Meals on Wheels. So our United Way panel that I was on to decide, you know, certain organizations and how much money we think they should get and everything. And Shane Hunt was on our panel. And SICA Meals on Wheels was one of the organizations that we were looking at. And we were all so shocked and concerned about the need for something so fundamental as food and people that don't have access to it, that Shane made, because the College of Business, he's the dean of the College of Business, and they're in charge of the Festival of Trees. And they've sort of revamped that event from the way it used to be to pick four or five nonprofits or causes to donate the money to. And he made SICA Meals on Wheels kind of one of the main ones because they desperately need it. So I think that was a good thing that will help them somewhat, but it's an ongoing problem. On mine, the, I'll start with the Audit and Investment Committee. We met last week, I believe it was, or maybe two weeks ago, and got a report. The auditor was there, or the representative from the audit firm, and went over our audit, and we're in very good shape. So we've gotten the, that's the 2023 audit is complete. So we were behind schedule. We were working hard to catch up. We all knew that. But that audit is now complete, and 2024 is well on its way. And we'll be done on time and meet the deadline. And so we're back on track to where we should be. But the audit report was actually very good. The final piece of that, I have an interview. The auditor wants to interview me as a representative of that committee and a council member. They're required to do that. And he will just ask about some of the, you know, things that were flagged that we're working on. And so we'll talk about that. But overall, good report, so that was very encouraging. And then in that committee, we also always look at kind of the economic outlook. And our outside member, Benny, is very knowledgeable about sort of the worldwide economic outlook. And then Gene really looks at Idaho. And things are in relatively good shape there. So Benny is fairly optimistic. The Historic Downtown Preservation Board, unfortunately, we were supposed to meet next, actually in two weeks. But because that coincides with the Thanksgiving holiday, they moved the meeting to this morning, and they meet at nine. And so obviously, I'm not there. So I don't know what's going on there, but I do know one thing that I can now tell you, the big surprise that I almost, that I mentioned last time, and it's live reindeer for the Nightlights Parade. So I don't know if you all have heard that, but they, I was told the cat's out of the bag, but it's really the reindeer's out of the bag. So it should be fun. I don't know that I want to get anywhere near them.
Cats, right?
Yeah.
Cats would eat reindeer.
That's right.
The cats would win that fight. And then I have Bannock Transportation Planning Organization. And I'm gonna let Rick talk about it because for some reason, I'm drawing a complete blank. We did meet. And we discussed several things.
I'm giving you no help.
You're giving me no help? You're gonna leave me hanging out there?
I think we met, we've already gone through this, yeah.
Did we already report on the last meeting?
I thought so.
Okay, because I'm thinking, I can't think of anything new.
Yeah, I thought we had.
To say.
I was hoping you two would do that because I couldn't think what we did.
Well, because I think we already met. I think we met and we've reported since we've met the last time.
Because that committee meets every two months.
That's what I'm going with. It's my story I'm sticking to.
I'm going with that story, too. But I think that's the reason we can't remember anything. So I couldn't come up with anything new. All I could think of was what I already reported. Now, I am afraid I'm not going to be able to use that excuse for PDA. I ran the meeting for PDA because several people that would normally run it were gone. And when I run the meeting, I'm so focused on that that I, I just can't remember what we did. We voted on a couple of things.
Hayden and I don't remember this.
It was very mundane. There wasn't any big news to report.
Shocking stuff, nothing happened there, so.
Yeah, we were both there, but there wasn't any big new.
Yeah, it was, it was a quick meeting.
The younger side of the dais doesn't usually have that problem.
Yeah, yeah.
I like how you dumped yourself in with Hayden for crying out loud. That's a
I think there's a pretty big difference there.
I mean, look at us.
That's right.
Look at us.
Uh, toys? Kind of right.
That's right.
I want to see the back of your head.
Focus on the front.
Is that it? Thanks, Rick. Go ahead, Rick.
Well, now that Linda has covered Bannock Transportation, I'll jump right to the airport commission. We met Tuesday, and the load factor right now at the airport's about 46%. And it has been flat at that point since, since forever. It's just, we're just not gaining much. One reason is our rates at a Pocatello Airport that Delta has set are dramatically too high. And there is some work going on. I know the mayor's working on it, and so are Allen and Christie, to try and get Delta to adjust those rates. Typical $400 to $600 more to fly out of Pocatello than other places. Delta sets those rates, we don't.
So I spoke with Anita, or I didn't speak with Anita. I had a text message back and forth with her yesterday and sent her some examples. And she has responded with, Pocatello's the lowest revenue generator in the Western United States for Delta right now. And the way they're trying to make those up is in higher and increase. I explained to her that the more you increase, the lower your load factor is going to be. And it's working just the opposite, that they need to level those out. She did say that they are planning some meetings by December that are, or somewhere in the December timeframe, that will level out those fares between Idaho Falls and Pocatello, and they'll continue to remain that. I'm confident that if we are close, the people from Idaho Falls drive down. That's been proven in the past. This is definitely an easier and a better airport to fly in and out of. TSA does a great job. Our Delta customer services do an incredible job here. In fact, I fly all over the country, I'll tell you right now, and there is not another, another airport that I would rather fly in and out of just simply because of the ease, the Delta employees are incredible, the SkyWest employees, I guess, but absolutely incredible. They take a lot of pride in what they do. The TSA in Pocatello, that you will never find an easier group of TSA people and ones that make you feel good, that make you do and help you rather than sit there and just run you through like cattle. These guys out here, absolutely incredible. In fact, I honestly wish that TSA would focus their training around what they're doing here because it would make travel a lot easier and a lot better.
And parking.
Well, parking is free, and people understand that parking is free and stuff. And so once they get those rates leveled out, then I think you're going to see an increase. But that's, that's what I was told literally this morning on my way to work this morning, so.
Well, if you, you know, if you want to see the regional reach, drive through the parking lot and look at the license plates.
Absolutely.
Bonneville County, Twin Falls, everything around us. People are flying from everywhere. They're coming to Pocatello to fly. We just need a more competitive rate structure.
That's right.
One thing that they're doing that is, you know, now that we have the larger aircraft, they have first class, and they're seeing a dramatic increase in fare costs because people are upgrading, particularly businesses who have frequent flyers are upgrading to first-class fares. So there may be the, I don't know what, what exact numerative they're using to calculate Pocatello, but we've got a high percentage of people flying first class out of here.
Yeah, we do.
One of the other discussions concerned the hangar project that's going to be happening out at the airport. The old racetrack is gone, and the city will be cleaning that out. Allen will cleaning up that area, going to extend the line. And there's a FAA financed project to put nine new hangars out there that can be leased. We've got a lot of folks looking for hangar space. So we can develop the infrastructure and then lease the land. They build a hangar, and there's tremendous demand right now.
Perfect.
Our fire fuel flow was up dramatically once fires finally kicked off in eastern Idaho and western Wyoming this year. Um, our fire fuel flow was up dramatically once fires finally kicked off in Eastern Idaho and, and Western Wyoming this year. It was down up until then, but we had dramatic increases in fire flow. I forgot the number, I was trying to remember what exactly that was. Nah, you don't see it. Oh, here it is. Uh, forty-five percent increase in fire flow over last year. Because last year was a no, no fire season and we got a late season this year and it's, it's a dramatic increase in, in income from, from fires. We also, one of the things the airport people are doing now, they're doing an appraisal of the property out there. It has to be done every five years, the last time was twenty-one. And they're trying to get a head start on getting an appraisal of the property out there, the non-airfield property. Because the FAA has a requirement that the leases for that property are within a certain range of appraised value. And the last time we did this, I was out there then, uh, the Trap Club is an example, would have gone from a thousand dollars a year to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars a year in, in rental property, rental fees, which is ridiculous. So they're trying to get a head start on figuring out what the values are, what they should rent for. And so when they, they get a prepared plan to, to go through this with the FAA and show why there's no way in heck, if we raise those rates, we lose everybody at the airport, they all leave.
Every one of them. So. Well, the problem is, is when you do an appraisal, you have comparisons and there's just no comparisons.
It's very difficult.
And so they look at comparisons of other airports that are actually leasing property and being able to do that, that have the infrastructure. We don't have that. And so it comes back with a ridiculously high number and so.
It's, it's very difficult to compare property. And so anyway, that's underway, they're very apprehensive about what they're gonna see.
I'm a little anxious over that too.
For appraisal values. The other thing was the Senior Activity Center. Uh, looking at the financials for the Senior Activity Center, in September, they lost about thirteen hundred dollars. In October, they made about eighteen hundred dollars, but for year-to-date, they've lost sixteen thousand dollars at Senior Activity Center. Uh, they've got that remodel project going on through that Lowe's grant. And they discovered, once, they're almost done. They've hung the last of the toilet paper dispensers and paper towel dispensers. They've just got a few finished details and that project will be done. But they've discovered some things that they should have done when they asked for the grant that they didn't. And they've spent about twenty thousand dollars of their own money to upgrade some lighting and some other features of what this remodel project has done. They had a theft over there. Guy walked in the south door, the handicap door, and stole the contractor who was working on this project's coat, phone and some personal stuff. Police department's working on it. I talked to our chief of police yesterday and, and again today. They haven't identified the guy. They, they know, they saw him leave, they got some pictures. He turned the phone in at, at the car dealership that's near the senior center along Main Street, along Fifth. And, uh, the police department is circulating the pictures that they have to try and identify this guy so they can try and recover that property. But the guy apparently came in that room, the contractor had some stuff piled in there. The guy just put on the guy's coat and took everything he could carry and left. So they're looking at better security for that, for that senior citizen center. And they haven't exactly figured out what they're going to do, but we'll, we'll see where all that goes. The senior center sponsored twenty-six NKA classes in the last couple of months. And they're, they're working very closely with NKA to provide a space for new knowledge adventures to present their stuff. It's not an ideal situation because most of those need some kind of audiovisual and that's tough in that building with that low ceiling, but it's working for the ones they're able to schedule over there. They also voted to support the current project on the Convergus Building. There's a movement which is being led by Brent McLean to try and make the Convergus Building a nonprofit center. And they voted to support the project, but not to join it. They have put so much money and so much remodel work into the senior center and it would take so much to move their nutrition program to a new building with a new kitchen and all that, that they wanna stay where they're at, at least for the foreseeable future. I think that's it. End of report.
Sounds great. Thank you. Yes, Council President.
I just wanna go back to Historic Downtown Pocatello for a moment. First of all, encourage everybody to attend the Nightlights Parade, I mean, not attend, be in. Hopefully, the public will attend. But the Nightlights Parade is probably, I think, the funnest parade of the year in Pocatello. It's a lot of fun, so I hope we're all there and, um, be careful of the reindeer and the cats. But the other thing I wanted to share with you was, uh, a couple of conversations I've had recently with people that are new to Pocatello, who are saying really good things about downtown Pocatello and saying, I really see that as, you know, the heart of this city. And, you know, there's so much happening down there, all the things that we've been wanting to achieve and sort of not been hearing those from people who've lived here a long time. New people who are coming in, that's how they're seeing it and experiencing it. One man told me, he goes, I live in Highland, and he goes, that's, you know, not Pocatello. Like, I mean, it is, part of it, but he's like, that's not the center, the center is downtown. And it's exciting and there's places to go and businesses and. So very positive feedback about this kind of image and, and center that we've been wanting to create. People are seeing it that way. So, um, I give kudos to, to Stephanie, but also, and, and her board, but to us and all the work we've done to try and make that our center.
Super. Well, thank you. All right, Council, thank you. Thank you for being here this morning. With that, we are adjourned.
Thanks.